Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the next sitting council. Okay. So we'll have a roll call. Councilwoman Woodward?
Here.
Councilwoman Semerino?
Here.
Councilwoman Mopler?
Here.
Councilman Reed?
Here.
All present.
Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unrat, indivisible, with every due justice sprawled.
This time, I, I need to be somewhere, uh, March fifteenth, special meeting, so much, um, and listen.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor a minute?
Yes, you may.
Uh, this is Margaret. Could you put your microphone closer to you, please?
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Jessica.
Yes, yes. Hey, pretty much, you gotta get it right there. Yes. Yes.
Would you hear still?
Yeah. Uh, yes, ma'am, I can hear everyone.
I'd like to remove, um, minutes, special meeting minutes for discussion. Special meeting minutes. I'm gonna go through the consent of the members.
Hi, Dan.
Um, please, say hi.
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 So, well, we'll go to the special meeting.
During the beginning of the meeting, uh, so Zuna attempted to bring a motion for me to be excused, and it was just pushed on through. I would just like to ask my fellow councilmembers to actually do that or not.
We, um, have decided not to ask the council to approve because, um, everyone was just approving. And in order to excuse someone, you have to have a legitimate reason. And that's when you decide to do that also. Obviously, they'll override that, they would want, but.
I, it's up to the council to approve or disapprove since not the mayor, I just not giving them the opportunity to do that. It didn't count the ability to do that.
That might, yes, you left Rebecca now.
No, I did not. I wasn't.
Well, this meeting, go ahead, use that app.
I'll say.
Um, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. After that, we'll now push into the purpose.
Hi, Dan. Oh, sorry.
Good work.
Fall in favor.
Hi.
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 Madam Mayor, may I have the floor before we continue, please?
Before we continue, I did submit the October, November, and December charter to you guys. However, in the light after committing on some other information given that was not put into this, so I am removing them. Message have removed, I, after.
I have small comments. And, uh, our discussion tends to die to a law theory that there's only going to be like five annual spots there. You want me to bring up any council land that exists to manage that term as a parallel line there? Just for the, you know?
Is it just one part of it?
That whole side, there's only about five spots. So, because there's so many, uh, birdpens, and it's gonna be hard for people to get in that. So, you want me to be able to bring that up for discussion, give a direction, uh, maybe change that for you?
So it's just the starting round here?
Yeah, it's on the east side on.
Is that the Ninth Street project?
Yes.
Okay.
New section?
No, just the east side. So, if you're. Your audio just went down.
Madam Mayor, the audio is not working.
Well, I'm gonna have this mic.
Okay, so. So since it was a special item, we'll discuss it.
Um, we'll just shut down the event and say, direction. And then, if there's no other addition, correct, almost do, approve it.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
All right, any confirmation or acknowledgement, um, or any visitor comments on non agenda?
I'm Michelle McLeod, and I live at Central One Fifth Street, and I here, uh, this evening. And the reason I wanted to have a comment is that I'm a picture now, and seven years ago, when Lloyd was there, he had a hard time keeping commissioners, and since I've been there over six years, we have had a series of rollovers, and we can't keep the people. And we finally do have another lineup of an outstanding group. And I'd like to revisit Lloyd's idea of being, uh, what a commissioner. If you guys could hear that, some consideration, and then get that on the agenda. Because it'd be, it, it, when I first started, you have forty pages. And, um, it's a volunteer position, and, you know, it slowly gained to two, three hundred pages. And it's gone from a volunteer position to more of a job commitment. I take personal days to read those packets, which isn't really something that I recommend.
East side, just west side, this is.
At any rate, um, it's something we talked about before, and I think it's important. And I'm sure that there was a lot of shock and awe when they opened that last packet. It's huge. And it's more like a doctorate thesis is that big. And so I'd really like to keep the people that we have and not continuously roll over. Because we've done it to a lot of people. So thank you for your consideration.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor to comment on that?
Yes, you may.
Um, the finding commission package that was image of this time, part of that had been given to them by Title Seventeen. So that's the biggest part. Um, so last time, I didn't give it out because they already had it. However, I got requested to be giving it out again. So whatever I get, even if it's a duplicate or quadruple get, it's going to be given to them again. So I don't know if there's another way we can fill the packets. Maybe exclude what was already given to them and ask to keep it. There won't be some things that we have it, but a lot of the times it's, it's carried over from one of these to the others, and then I have to reprint it again to get it together again. So.
They have so many. Since this is a visitor on that, so.
No, but I always like to do the question.
Okay, I have another comment. Michelle McLeod again, uh, Central One Big, um, we might have gotten packet five times, and I've already, uh, read this numerous times over here. It's repetitive for me. Although we have some really great changes, um, we've only have, she says there's five times it's come out, many, many times. But the people just got sworn in, and they've been to one meeting after that, and one of us is there, so really. The new people, which are more than half of us, have just received the information.
Here, um, um, we will then move to our regular.
This committee reports.
Um, for me, and I sent a separate plan to find it. At time, uh, after heated debate, uh, the motions been tabled, well, very vague. These best, uh, big, this. And that's the mayor down there.
Hi. Um, I attended the, um, Benton Frank, uh, Benton County mosquito call. I toured their facilities, facility. They are just ramping up, um, obviously, starting with, you know, some mosquito controls and it sounds like it starts happening in the Yackawatt area, and then we're just going down with the west side. So very interesting to tour their facility and have a good understanding of everything that goes into, um, controlling the mosquito population. So I definitely appreciate it, and I'll look forward to the next.
Start a razor, it's gonna help a lot.
Yes, it sounds like so. Be down in the aqueduct if you're, um, hitting out our river and hopefully helping on that. Mosquito population that we do have here just right here.
I agree.
I will report now. Um, submitted again. For real, the bridge. So, hopefully, I know that's still a zero. And a lot of connections with people that are interested in, um, student students, and have to bring money, spend. So. And for the rest of this time, I guess.
Um, I too was presented with that, the same presentation, definitely, very, very likely, definitely.
Uh, so moving on now to, uh, the council. Most of you know, we are, I mean, we're some candidates for the open access position. So, um, we want to, um, start that process. So, Madam Mayor, may I have a point?
That's what I have. So at the special meeting, um, on May twenty ninth, um, I proposed to the council, uh, some city vacant acres. If we can have everything in order. However, one of the things that came up was the background check. So I was wanting to bring this to council, uh, I didn't give him, um, I wanted to ask him something, but wanted to make this, wanted it or not. I was trying to understand that we've actually run across to build new one. And then I had an HR form today where it says, hence the law. So I just wanted to let you guys know that that's, that piece of information on. Um, however, the procedures are that, um, the applicants will be sequestered, uh, away from everybody else, during the interviews, um, they will, the interview will not be more than thirty minutes long, um, and they count, the council has a set of questions in front of them and ask the interviewees. Um, the applicants will face the question until all interviews are complete, and we'll be throwing them to the other side of the office. Um, they will be in no random order brought up to you guys. Um, you have a question for me with the evaluation forms. And then at the end of the process, the council or mayor and myself will go in second session. Rebecca, I have a question. What does the process have to do with getting a question? Uh, probably so the interviews council will convene and execute a session for evaluating both. And however, all interviews nominations involved will take place up here. So, yes, that's not on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor, please?
Yes, you may.
Uh, whomever is speaking needs to identify themselves, please.
Margaret, this is Sarah. My apologies, nine oh one, Angeline Boulevard. I was asking Rebecca to please clarify the rest of the process after executive session. And what we heard was they would come back, council would come back and vote, but voting is not on the agenda tonight. Nor was it requested to be added.
I believe it's in, most of.
Yeah, the council interview is over.
Thank you for the clarification. To clarify, we want to vote for each candidate. So. We'll see what. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Sorry about that. Um, and then, um, once the, it's been voted over, um, done, and all the nominations that are up here, and, um, that being if, after we tally up the qualifications and evaluations, uh, the what's considered a move forward for nomination out here. And then, however, if the, the council is to go back into executive session to, uh, discuss further qualifications, then there's nothing that we can do about it. We decided to, and we will. And then, um, the mayor. And they will be sworn in.
And just as a reminder, so this process is really, um, say loosely regular, but there's very little direction, parties, the state statute, uh, council will appoint. Uh, it, as ultimately, ultimately, it's up to the council to decide what, uh, what process they want to be able to go through this. Uh, if council wants to, uh, adjourn, uh, executive session by themselves, they shouldn't do that. Uh, they, uh, can use the forms as they, as they choose. But at the end of the day, um, the only requirement is that, uh, whether it's, uh, that the council can discuss in the executive session. Uh, final decision has to be made in public. So it's actually a motion and second, a vote of any particular candidate in public. But that's pretty much it. The statute is pretty devoid of any information. So it's really up to the council, however, what you see.
The only thing we have, right?
Okay, that's, that's the last thing.
But that being said, um, they have all the applicants following me, please? You are missing one, so we'll, we'll, that and tell her who we just. Follow me.
Make a recommendation of sugar extra candy.
I don't see her.
I just see a couple of them.
Laurie, are you attending, Beazum? Thank you. Apparently so. While the council wants to do the, all state, that's the question. Someone has a question? Well, Sam, get them asking. Start this off. First question, um, do you have any financial ties and business dealings with either the council or the mayor?
Not the city council and not the mayor, however, to be transparent, we're with the Department of State and Secretary Treasurer, a very vital organization, which is a five oh one three, um, and Mayor Lehman is a part of that organization. I don't think about the direct financial interest as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your definition of integrity in how it's in you?
That's a great question, David. I'm a CPA. Integrity is all about what I do. I'm a finance director for a publicly traded company. And integrity is about doing the right thing, being honest, honest in my career, probably. And there's just not exceptions, for any that might.
Is there anything in your background that's going to track, hide, and public scrutiny, hidden, disclosed, like?
I don't believe so. I'm a CPA, and I work in a big street that would require me to disclose. I believe most of the same things should happen. Working in a public facility as well. If there is anything that came up, I'm worried.
What is your objective, or what are your objectives for six months becoming city councilperson? And what is your strategy to achieve those objectives?
I think so. That's a great question. You know, I think that we live in a rural community, and there's a lot of people and volunteers, a lot of time. Thanks to all of you for being here, first of all, and there's just a ton of things in our small community that happen, and it makes it a great place to live. Um, my observation is that the city has been in triage mode for a really long time. I think the city staff is at a really good place, doing a really good job. I hope that in the next six months, you can move from a reactive, you can move from a reactive place that's tactical to something that's more strategic and future focused. And I believe my experience working in a for-profit business internationally, it's multi-million dollars, not because of that part matters, but they deal with different people who speak different languages and have different objectives. It's important because something you all need to do is work on community, living community, and serving the community. I'm also really interested in, um, the excitement around that, maybe to project development. I think that that is, it's gonna take more than six months, but I think the city's never been closer. And I think the opportunities that that can bring for, um, businesses, potentially tourism to connect to Red Mountain and more of the region are really important. Because that means that we could keep our economy growing in a right way that's productive, but we also could stay our good budget. I mean, people are kind of just spend sixty, eighty dollars on a bottle of wine at Red Mountain, they can afford to be in a hotel room, and generate tax revenue for the city, that and city. And we want all of it. Please, I do. I don't have visitors come and pay and enjoy our beautiful community, and it's a town that have a, not our family budget.
Why are you seeking appointment to the city council, and what do you feel your qualifications are?
That's a great question, Jake. Thanks. Um, one of the things about living in a small town that I've observed, while it's a great place to live, there's always a lot of work to do. In fact, there's always more and more and more work to do. And I think that participating actively in a positive way is really important for our people. And working together, people with different backgrounds, um, and different ideas, it's really important so that we can preserve all the history that we have that makes them so great. But work to be inclusive as well, so that people don't feel disinfranchised, because that's not fair. That's not what we're about. As far as my experience, did you want me to talk more about my trip?
You kind of already answered it.
Sure. Well, I put together a letter. Sorry, I put together, um, a letter about some of the things, but. I'm working on or have been working on, and when I say I, I'm the I. There's one person working a little bit, let's just move out. Um and you wouldn't want to, there's too much good news. So I've been fortunate to live in Benton City since twenty eighteen, I grew up in Costco. My professional background is advocacy, community, finance, accounting, I serve on the state board of CPAs, I serve on the Broward County. Park Board um for the region representing Benton City. Benton County, it's Benton County, excuse me, thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the clarification, I forgot my word. Um I've had the opportunity to participate both at a state regional level and a variety of capacity. Um for advocacy and other community initiatives that both here in Washington State, but previously when I lived for about twelve years in Florida. Um through the Benton City Revitalization Organization where I serve and serve as a private treasurer, I think. Um I've been working with the revitalization organization since June of twenty twenty along with Alex Weber. And I think that we've made some good headroads in terms of bringing things together in the neck. Um. The park thing that we've been working on, there's still a long way to go. Has been a really fun project too, because we were able to involve a lot of different organizations and. Reflecting on driving not just to the park, which is the start of the half to freeway, but into towns to just spend their time. Um I think the Palm is a regional icon and that's a good new story for us and it just is better and better. And there's a lot of other great businesses here that we work. Some of our um partnerships that we've been working to cultivate and expand include the Tri-Deck for the Benton's half to freeway, Friends of Ajremon. Washington State DOT, Mission Wildlife, Red, um there's others, but those are the ones that come to the top of my mind. Um. I would encourage you all also, if I may, to consider attending the May nineteenth um. Building Bridges event that the Chamber is putting on, we invited a lot of people from around the region to attend to showcase all the good work that's happening for Benton City. And just keep them engaged. Again, I don't think it's about changing Benton City, I think Benton City is great. However, there is a lot that's already in place that's going to continue to change where we live and the way to be part of it. And what was the date on that again? I believe it's Thursday, May nineteenth. I have some flyers that can. And I'm not, um. My fiancee is a member of the Chamber, but I'm not, I'm not personally a member of the Chamber, I just. May nineteenth from five thirty to seven thirty, and I have. Flyers that we can pass around here together between my house and. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Apologies if there's not enough of that, um. No, it's colored, we get more of those.
That one of the things that. The candidates need to improve, can't. So I don't know that that was actually here during the process, but I can.
Absolutely.
Come back and I gotta talk to you guys just real quick, sorry. Clarify one particular issue.
By all of my own.
I'm saying that. Thank you.
You say the name when you say that.
Glad to be here. Don Allen here. So I would ask for favor of all of you, speak up as best you can, because I'm a little. Even though I got hearing aids. I don't do a lot of them. Okay.
Sure. Do you have any financial ties or business dealings with either the council or the mayor?
No. Maybe I should.
Okay, now for the next one. Uh what is your definition of integrity?
Well, I think a lot of people should have integrity, look at how they do things. And uh I think it's very important, uh. Um I think I have a lot of.
Because I'll roll back into question number two, um is there anything in your background that could heighten public scrutiny? If undisclosed or later is here?
Uh no.
What is your objective or what are your objectives with the first six months of becoming a city council person? And what is your strategy to to achieve those objectives?
Uh yeah, I like that. Uh I think it's very important, there's quite a few things that I've already thought about. That I would like to bring up before city council and the mayor and everybody else that has been brought up before. But not have been worked on or talked about, uh they didn't kind of let go and uh I like to bring those things up and. Uh I do have several things I would like to talk about. Uh if you would like to be eye specific, I can do that, but I can tell you there is one.
Uh how about if you give us an example of just.
Okay, uh I think it's important that uh that we have a library that is maintained by the city. And I think that that library should be on a maintenance schedule. Uh it should be uh taken care of at all costs, uh it's a very expensive building, uh and it is not being maintained. Uh as you all noticed, down the street, and you can see the the fascia board, which is the board that trips all the way around the building. Uh it's in dire need of paint and has been for several years. I had brought that up. Two or three years ago, uh and uh it still hasn't happened, that's one.
Don, why are you seeking appointment to the city council and what do you feel your qualifications are for that position?
Uh the reason I I'd like to see change. I like to see change uh in what we're doing and how we're doing it. Uh I think we need to be more together on what we're doing. Stand as a unit instead of as individuals. Uh I I mean, sometimes I think that happens, maybe not because of the fact that that's what we're doing, but that's what's happening. And I I'd like to see that change, I'd like for us to be together and try to make things happen out of the city rather than. And that's important, very important. And I would like to say another thing that I was working on when um. Uh I was on the planning commission, I was a chair for the planning commission for several years. Uh I also was a member of that for a long time. Um the last thing that we went over before I left, when I left, uh was what you're dealing with right now. And I had a lot of concerns about that, uh I wanted to get involved in that, uh I think it needs to be addressed, and I still think it. That's kind of something. So uh I was thinking about it then, and I'm still thinking about it.
I believe the last question is to please give it, please give a brief summary of your background and experience, including education, work history, and civic engagement activities.
Um. Uh I was uh born uh nineteen forty eight, so that makes me seventy four years old, which I am. So um I started in the trade and I am a python. I am, uh I served a pen ship for five years to learn the trade. I carry a license for that, I also carry a license for ball maker and and organ. I also retired from that trade, uh a good standing member and very proud of it. Uh during my time in the trade, I spent probably, I would say. Uh ninety-two percent of the time as in management, not working with the force, I was a. Performant or in charge of things and I did that all those years. So I'm familiar with working with that, I'm familiar with working with people and what you need to do in order to get the best qualifications out of. Uh I'm willing to do that and I did that. Um I after my term, uh I decided to, I was also a foster parent, did that for several years. Uh until I retired from it. Um. I like to, I have my passions, I love racing, car racing and stuff, so I do a lot with that. I belong to a gang that does those things, uh we go all over, all over the place and do that. I I enjoy it a lot. So I have hobbies, I also race cattle, uh I have a small farm. I'm also a huge vinyl junkie with probably over a half a million records that are in my warehouse. Uh that I sell all over the world, uh and that type of civic business, uh jukeboxes and uh. Uh crank drum trumpet players and all kinds of anything related with. I deal with, so I have a lot of hobbies. And um I try, I keep pretty active, that's how I like to work on my farm and do things, but. I also like the idea of being involved with people and how to get the best out of them, and I enjoy doing that also. So that's been my life of of doing things, I've also been here during the time. And and not too long ago, there was an issue with the uh. The selling of properties from the city and there was an issue where I brought to the uh. City council's position and I think most of you were there at the time and we were changing, I wanted to change the code. That you had, uh because I thought it wasn't very, very well done. So we made changes to that and the suggestions I I made at that time were incorporated into code and it passed. And we did make those changes to the benefit of what we were doing, so that did happen. I also, over the years, have been to many city councils. Uh no matter who is in office, I've dealt with the city over many issues over the years and so we have. This way, this way, we're well known. Okay, so that's no idea. Okay. I also have a set of.
You gotta have a system.
Gotta have such. Thank you.
Thank you.
All set in the next victory or whoever says.
I'm the executioner.
Why, you're gonna do that? Very good. Take me to my leader.
All right, here we go. First question, do you have any financial ties or business dealings with either the council or the mayor?
I do not, no.
Okay, next question is, what is your definition of integrity and how is it used in every gay life?
That's a great question. So I feel, I feel, I mean, not because, I feel tech integrity is a couple of different things in my eyes, I think. Um it's it's a function of resilience and I think it's a function of of consistency and and kind of holding yourself accountable to. Um you know, a higher standard and ultimately, I I I think I I try to represent this way in my everyday lives by, you know. Putting putting others or more specifically, putting things that are. You know, ultimately bettering, community bettering, um planet, for example, or, you know, ultimately just. Things that help us move forward, um and and hopefully, you know, create a better.
Okay, take the next question again, so. Um is there anything in your background that would attract heightened public scrutiny, undisclosed or later is so? Do you want to read that question? Is there anything in your background that attract heightened public scrutiny, if undisclosed or later is so? No question.
What is your objective or what are your objectives within the first six months of becoming a city council person? And what is your strategy to achieve those objectives or objectives?
Well. To reflect um to reflect back to the the council's original goals of, um I'm spacing on exactly. Uh what all of them were, but for example, the splash pad or ultimately doing things for the community that's going to help pave. The roads for not only future generations, but just the inevitable growth, that's how it comes in. So I think, I think it's really important that, um first of all, unity comes to mind. Um I I think that there needs to be a strong form of unification between all of the council members and understanding really what the. Understand what the community actually wants and and needs. Um rather than, you know, having um infighting or or ultimately just distracting from. The the goals that could really benefit us, um so I think, I think, I mean, just. Speaking on behalf of B C R O, I think uh we have done such a good job of of kind of. Creating a community and involving a lot of people that, you know, want to ultimately see Benton City. Become what it can become and it's it's very apparent that this is an amazing city. Um and and has a lot of a lot of benefits and a lot of growth coming in and I look forward to helping be part of that change.
Alex, why are you seeking appointment to the city council and what do you feel your qualifications are for the position?
So I I'm seeking this this position primarily because. This this city is is one that I have grown, I have grown to become very passionate about, ultimately, I I feel that. Just given being a small business owner in this town, um you know, being being a part of the community and a part of the organizations has really. Uh spurred me and and ultimately. Motivated me to to want to really put my head down and help in any way I can. I I'm not sure, you know, I I know given my background, I and and when I went to college, for example. I learned a lot about economic development. I learned a lot about economic development, I learned a lot of um just in just general economic things, I think there'd be a lot a lot of value comes to um, you know, city finances and and what developments and and things of the sort and um.
Now, I believe the last question is, please give a brief summary of your background and experience, including education, work history, and civic engagement activities.
Absolutely. Um so I guess starting with the education, I have grown up, uh I did grow up in tri cities. I was all around, um in all all three of the tri city regions. And um went to Chihuahua for my first two years of high school, and then I did the running start program at C D C, my junior and senior year. Uh shortly after that, I fortunately got the opportunity to play uh football and attend the University of Pennsylvania in Philadelphia. Uh there I studied finance and real estate. Um and shortly after I graduated, I went to New York City and was working um in banking there at a firm on on Wall Street for a little over a year. And the COVID hit shortly uh after the scare mark, and I was getting pretty tired of living in the closet and nothing was open, so I happened to come back here and uh don't say I got persuaded, but I started seeing some of the some of the things going on. Um and just the opportunities involved and passionate, and that's kind of when I dug my roots in here. And um anyways, so moving on to more currently, uh I am partnered with my cousin, and we are running a construction company called C A I Construction. Uh I am responsible for the financial side, uh the the fun stuffs like the accounting, uh et cetera. And Noah is more on the contractor side. Um and I don't want to divulge too much, but I I I think it's very important to make it clear that there have been a lot of rumors uh that I am essentially my dad. Um and I don't know if this is the correct platform, but I just want to make it very clear that my dad and I are very different people. Uh we have our own opinions, and he is he is no longer a part of our company, and I'm so fortunate that we have got to learn um from him and from his experience. But I am quite frankly uh saddened that I am constantly looked at as him. I I want to make it clear that I am my own person. Uh I and I have a lot of passions for this town, and in anything that I do uh and I set my mind to, I I give it all my effort and try my best, and I uh I want to make that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love those guys.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we'll start this off. Um first question, do you have any financial ties or business dealings with either the council or the mayor?
Any questions, two and three, so uh first one is, what is your definition of integrity?
I think my interpretation is always so cute to stand behind what you say. And I'm um saying vicious things about people, it's better to always um wonder what's said and um give the person benefit. I don't like gossip and.
Next question, is there anything in your background that heightens public scrutiny, undisclosed?
I do not think so, no.
What is your objective or objectives within the first six months of becoming a city council person? And what is your strategy to achieve that objective or?
Well, I'd like to work together and achieve as many goals as possible in the community, it'd be nice to work on parks and recreation, because we, that's our weak point. And make our parks better and have more activities for families. Um with our gro- urban growth, all the homes, we don't have anywhere near as many activities as we need for families. And I'd like to work hand in hand with the council and make our lives better here, the lives better for our community, and keep our children here.
Michelle, why are you seeking appointments to the city council? And what do you feel your qualifications are for the position?
Well, I am seeking a position because I really loved the experience when I was here before. I feel like I can give a valid contribution to the community and to the uh great people that are here on the council, and I would just like to make our lives better here, and I want to be involved. That that answer is true. Question.
And the last question, please give a brief summary of your background and experience, including education, work history, and civic engagement activities.
My name is Michelle Plow. I've been here since uh nineteen seventy six. I married here, I have two children. I volunteered um with the the Kindergarten School District for eight years. I started my volunteering with the Sledge Methodist Church. I went down with the Methodist Church to Ben's speaking thing. I volunteered down there for seven years, two of which I was in charge. And I have volunteered for numerous activities during that time with the Chamber of Commerce and the activities in the park for all of the holidays. And I did a lot of volunteering with children at school for after school activities. I'm not just a mother, I'm a grandmother and a mentor, I all that. I also um went to college, I went to Columbia Basin College for two years. I also did Strout 30 Institute, I have a social psychology and social work certificate. With my eight years of volunteering and my twenty three years in the um school district, I have dedicated my life to education and transportation. I was a, excuse me, I was a paraprof teacher uh for seventeen years, counting the eight years of volunteering. I also was a driver's ed teacher for four years, where I worked both in Pasco, uh Richland, and I had a room at Kindergarten High School. And I was the teacher, the instructor, and the state tester. I also was a um turn bus driver for twelve years on the weekend, and I did summer school occasionally, but no, mostly I taught school. And I also uh eight years ago, my husband passed away, well, almost nine years ago, and that's when I decided to be on the city council. And I found it most beneficial, it really saved my life. It gave me direction and purpose and uh something of real quality to do with my life, and I uh I did lose my election, and I'm completely okay with that, I didn't, I'm not a loser, I'm a winner. And I didn't even take time off, I went right into the uh uh down to the land commission, and I've been there for over uh six years, and then my seventh year. And um I really feel like I've been benefits in the city, and I've worked hand in hand with all of you, even though you're mostly on my phone or my computer screen. Um I've been very involved with the city, and a lot of my campaign goals have been accomplished. And I would just like to have a better future and do more and experience more and help our uh community have a better life.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll nominate Sarah. Can we make a motion? I make a motion, you know.
Second. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Madam Mayor, I have a twelfth. Uh uh congratulations, Sarah, I get that out first. And on that note, I want to urge the other candidates that there is now watch for that. Madam Mayor, can I, do I want to?
Can you do that?
Can I say one more?
Sure.
There, you look in awe back there, do you accept that position? Um there's no.
Yeah, well, there was a really a lot of great candidates who participated in the process, so I'm gonna maybe be in shock for a little bit longer. Thank you. We're fortunate to have so many great people in our community who want to serve.
Okay, all right. Now we have a lot of business. So. Um. So move on now for the Island's terms on this Dale Avenue extension. Waterline Commission. Mr. Rainey, on? Talk about that.
He was right up there.
He was. Good Mr. Rainey.
Oh, good evening. Um so this is a follow up to the last meeting where we uh went over the costs for the Dale Avenue uh waterline connection, and uh in that meeting, we had the cost of the uh um I think we had the cost for the contractor, but we didn't have the the cost for the um uh materials, and so those were both provided. And so I guess if you guys have any questions with that.
I believe that it was brought back for summary.
Uh yeah, it it was brought back for um so you guys could make a motion on the total cost of of the work done.
The work is completed currently, is that correct?
Yes, it is, and the waterline is in operation, the the connection, so.
Well, you have no way to recoup those costs.
Uh no, not not to my knowledge.
We're gonna.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we we broke up there.
Yes.
So this is the motion to approve.
Yes, yes.
Motion's on the floor to the second.
I think we're all still waiting for it. Okay, um yes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is the W C I A insurance claim thirty minutes. And we're definitely discussing this, or is like? Okay, yeah, here you go, you need to speak up.
Okay, um so yeah, we ended up uh just deciding to go ahead and open up a claim for damages that were caused to the community center um due to high winds. Um so if you guys remember Winterfest last year um in December eleventh, um they ended up renting a twenty by forty canopy and set it up on the south side of the community center. Unfortunately, the wind went ahead and blew that up and over the rooftop, causing damages. Um been going back and forth with the the company that set up that tent. And um they're just basically not not taking liability for damages. So I took the initiative to go ahead and uh open up a claim and talking to uh um to the insurance agent, they s- they suggested to uh to go ahead and open up the claim, and then they would pursue um cost and um from the company that set up the the tent. So um that's that's where it's at, he did mention there's a five thousand dollar deductible um for that, that um after upon investigation, they'll end up having to pursue the the third party company that set up the tent for that day. Because there was a win advisory for thirty to fifty mile per hour gust and wind that day, but they ended up setting up that tent regardless. So um yeah, that's pretty much it.
Do we know what the total cost of repairs will be?
Uh no, the uh currently um working on setting it, setting up some contractors to come out, roofing companies to give us bids on what it's gonna cost to make the repairs. Um and um that that's that's what we're working on now. So no, I I don't have a total cost right now.
Um it's my understanding from what they told me, um the insurance told, um mentioned to him to open the claim, but then start giving estimates of what it was gonna cost to do that, and I wanted to bring the five thousand dollars back to you guys, so that will be the process, I don't know if it's a fate or start, but I know that it's. You guys, so that will be the process. I don't know if it's a case or start, but I know that it's still. So I wanted to bring the, bring out these. For both to get paid. It was something um, I bet it is for. Anytime. Um, however, with the way um, talking to him. He doesn't foresee an issue. Recurring some of those.
Madam Mayor, this is the, uh, could I comment on this?
Who's this?
Dakota.
Dakota, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just um, I just wanted to comment just on the chamber's behalf, just that. Uh, wanted to clarify that when we had rented with that company, uh, we had elected for the damage. Uh, waiver because uh, the options were either that we could set up, um, but take liability because of the weather. Um, and and we elected for the additional cost for them to set up the tents where they took the liability waiver. Um, I believe I've I've sent a copy of it to rec and I understand that there's been some back and forth with the tent company specifically, but. Um, just on insurance side of it, that really all you should be doing is opening the claim with your insurance company to arbitrate with. The tent company for the rental, um, and for the damage done to the community center. Um, but you guys or the city shouldn't have to be paying that five thousand dollar deductible whatsoever, so. Um, I don't know if that helps, but just wanted to provide some context to it.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I have a report. Um, my concern is if we haven't recouped the cost already and this um, vendor, this tent vendor is not. Doesn't have the integrity to take care of the cost. What makes you think you're gonna pay when we thought of the point? And how much damage is there? That we're expecting to go above five thousand? I'm just curious. I haven't heard anything about this still.
I don't think anyone's gotten any estimates yet.
Well, what is the roof ripped off the building?
No, it didn't look that way to me, but there, I think parts of the fascia are more damaged. Jose, can you? Um, talk a little bit more about the damages?
Yeah, so um, we do have several pictures that we're taking. Uh, like the mayor mentioned, part of the fascia is is uh, on the. South side of the building is is uh, destroyed and will have to be just uh, replaced. Um, uh, part of the roof on that south side is is as well gonna have to need uh, replacing. Um. I don't know what, you know, labor materials and all that stuff is gonna cost, but as soon as I have more information as far as. You know, getting these estimates that the insurance company is requiring, um, I'd be more than happy to put those uh. Together and then uh, as well as the pictures and submit that.
Thank you.
I think I would prefer to get estimates and then go forward with this.
I'm in favor of that. I would, I would like.
Sorry, wanting to table this for.
If I could just say one thing real quick, I mean, I'm not a burden claim. But um, it sounds like what is happening, again, I don't wanna talk about school here, but it sounds like what's happening. That the claim has been reported to our insurance company. It sounded like that was a claim made to the vendor. Uh, I don't know whether they're, whether they relate that claim to their insurance company, who then has subsequently denied the claim. I don't know. Uh, but if our insurance company is saying, typically what that means is that our insurance company is saying, um, you need to open a claim with us first. That will trigger your deductible, uh, start going and getting estimates, uh, and then they will work with the other insurance company. Uh, to try to uh, get the claim resolved for them. It's your deductible back. That's, you know, typically how that works, but again, we haven't been involved in it. I'm happy to, we're happy to help, uh, however we can, but uh, it just sounds like, yeah, then we need to, there were more details.
I'd be in favor of that. I'd like some more.
Um, so what are you looking for? You want to just file a claim?
Yeah.
So, being familiar with it. And I'm trying to run in here, cause my insurance actually let us pull back the claim. I'm hoping that that's the same. So, at this time, we'll move the process forward quickly, turn water damage already. Um, I don't know if you've got that, well, carp secured in any way, but.
I don't think so.
So, let's go ahead and look at this subjectively. Let's move ahead with. I'll make it, um. I make a motion to approve payments, five thousand dollars. Uh, which I don't think they'll claim until sometime later.
Um, who will be paying is paying for it.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
Um. Right, I got it. So, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Motion, aye? Motion, aye?
Alright, so um. Are we then not going to build a wild one? The plan has already been opened. What I was told he was pretty doubtful to have a pre-approval. Yeah, when they ask us for it, put that around a lead time. Okay, alright, as long as it's going on.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Everybody make sure they're speaking directly into their mics. We're having difficulties. I don't know why. That's why I'm actually in here, trying to figure out why it's not going over. So, talk straight into the mics would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, um. Next is discussion items. This is the sweep for your email update. Um, yes, Madam Mayor, uh, I brought this segment to council on March twenty ninth during the special meeting. It was approved however canceled. Had a question regarding the late for the contract. Um, after the meeting, I did call in and we brought a flexible plan, which means we can cancel at any time, but we approved this. We're on a one-year contract. And the amount increased only actually six hundred forty-three dollars instead of ten dollars. Prior. Um, and and after that year, we can go back to a flexible plan to throw the cancel. There, they are not trying to put long-term. And then we subtract the flexible plan and I come off of the direction of David's, I wrote in that meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, then there is no motion. Alright, um, the next item is the hiring inspections for businesses.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes.
So, this is kind of been a project I've been working on. Um, I still have one more phone call. Regulations of uh, business licenses needing franchise. Um, really digging into this and I've been working back on it. So on and so forth. Basically, in a nutshell, what's going on is the city is eating the cost for. The uh, the building inspections for the annual business licenses. Um, those are the cost of eighty dollars?
They are, the cost of seventy-five dollars for inspection.
So, that is quite a bit cost, so we're trying to figure out. Um, so one of the questions that's remaining is with our insurance rating. If we choose to not require fire inspections, if that's allowable by law. What would that look like to our business? Insurance, stuff like that. So, we're looking at what's in the best interest and what's cost for the businesses. And also trying to figure out how we're not paying that cost. Cause obviously, that's built up quite a bit over the last couple.
Um, on that note, one of the things, Mr. Reed and I um. Thought I was adding the the key to straight to the business licenses, allowing our business license to go up to hundred and five dollars. Which is, we checked Brandview, Ranger, and Prosser and City Division, right?
Correct.
And um, they are, they range anywhere from fifty bucks to ninety dollars. Um, and I don't know if fire inspections are included with that. Um, again, I'm gonna relate to where I come from, City of Lofolo. Um, fire inspections were included in the business licenses, however, we, the fire department was. Understandingly, they didn't really charge us to do them. So, cause we know the contract just require services, they keep the fire inspections. So, that's why that's different here. Um, so me and Dale are still trying to figure out. I have need to go whether we just require them for new businesses or annually, whatever RTW Oax says. And if we have to increase our business license. I think you have to be careful there because, for example, my four flex. I have always paid for, I'm sorry, a man handling the fire extinguishers and all of that. This year, that cost me two hundred and twenty dollars. So, if you have a business that has three or four fire extinguishers. Even if you charge seventy-five dollars, you're still in the hole. So, um. Yeah, I think it's something we have to work out, whether we turn it over to them. Inspection separately. That was one of the options me and Dale, you know, they do the fire inspections on their own, but it's with the actual seat. And confirm the proof that they got their fire inspection and not give their business license to that. Right. So, there's many different avenues. Me and Dale, we do that. So, um, I don't know, are we, guys wanna table this again?
I think this was just a discussion, so. Series of proposals. To be bothered on that announcement later date.
Can I, uh, there's one more?
Yes.
Um, just one thing, if we allow them to go get their harsh inspection, if they're not using the same vendor. Or they're having inconsistency. And we need to make sure that's consistent. So, please, please, that's a good observation.
Can, can I speak, Madam Mayor? Yes, you can. Jim comes. Um, so, as I was thinking about it, like. What's the business owner's fee? You know, I mean, is it? Are they rebutting paying seventy-five dollars for their fire inspections? I mean, is that an option?
Yeah, I don't think we, we haven't really approached any of this, so. We just wanna have options to present.
Yeah.
Get a feel of where to go.
Because if it costs two hundred dollars or something for OXAR to come in, and like you're saying, a uniform, you know. Thing with the people, cause when they come in and inspect, they're inspecting all kinds of stuff. You know, making sure they're not finding the stuff with here and uh, the postings of the addresses are correct for emergency services as well as the fire extinguishers.
Right, so.
OXAR have been a replacement of our inspection, fire extinguisher, or inspection of the. Precautions, things like that. That's what OXAR does, their fire system. Um, what you really need, if you don't have it, somebody with a building inspector that you can send off to fire inspections with. So they're gonna leave it.
That's cool, and that's, um, I did provide Mr. Reed with, uh, what Northwest Codes actually does for their fire inspections. They have a basic fire inspection checklist that they do for most of the cities, and then they also, PASCO has its own fire inspection, which is way more. Does cost a little bit more money. Yeah, but there is a a basic, a basic one that goes through.
Yeah, I think for my company, they fill up strictly. On it. It depends on the building, the city of PASCO. Gonna try to, too.
Right, and that's, that's, cause honestly, when this all got caught, that's how it was working, you know, it was like they were calling for fire inspections. I was like. Hey, seventy-five bucks, you know, and like you've never paid before. Like, well, it shows that you did, but that's when it got caught, you know, so.
And that's a good catch, because that's what it's about.
Right, right, but I'm just wondering if they would have a problem actually paying that seventy-five dollars they give for fire inspection or insurance, you know, like. It's safe. Just thought, I didn't know if that was.
Well, we got to. There's somebody around the block.
I think it's wrong.
Um, I'll leave it up to these two. They're working the product.
I have a question on that. I have a question on that as well.
Yes.
Is it okay? So, I agree. Do you need to speak in private? Uh, for having a, a business here in back city since two thousand fourteen, I have a fire inspection. And. We pay for our own, up to eight own. Fire extinguishers and everything else in the background. It's Christmas last, February. So, I'm a little confused as to why. This has become an issue now, if it's something that we've done every year, not one, just speaking in general.
It came up because, as you know, this year, we went to a one-stop licensing, private state. And when that happened, then we realized that. What happens to the fire? And every time our inspectors have to go out and respect for fire, it costs the city seventy-five dollars. And we haven't been collecting that since, what, twenty-fourteen? So, this is an effort to try to break even. And we're exploring ways to do that.
Well. Just from observation, if the city was at fault for not collecting that over the last times, wouldn't the business force should be punished to make up for that amount of time?
No, no, that's not, this being, that's Jackson, and like saying, it's, we need to look out forward to a stop.
Okay, I'm just looking at a business license costing a hundred and thirty-five dollars is. Out, and just.
Right now, we're in two.
Right. Last double, who was it?
Yeah, we're just saying, but it wasn't covered in time. But that's, that's the issue. By going.
Oh, just curious, okay.
Okay. So, the next item is, um. Well, memorandum. Uh, it seems to be. Just standing on that. Um, this was actually uh, brought up at the. More than two, at the special meeting as well, I would tables to this meeting, it's my understanding that. Mr. Reed and his special friend have figured it out. Um, I, I didn't, we were given the task to see what other cities do, and I haven't found any. Things with the union contract that puts part-time before it. Um, so I don't know what.
Well, obviously, I, I missed the, the calling on that one, so.
I did, too.
With Mr. Reed, uh, we're never in contact with each other on this topic.
Yeah, we will. Round it up. To that one, what, what's happening?
I remember that conversation, I guess I, I didn't, I, I personally.
Well, now, no, I'll watch it, okay?
Yes. We can do that.
Second.
Thank you.
Alright. I'll be in contact with you.
Thank you.
Alright, um.
Yeah.
We have, um, just now, second, I'm like, there for some time.
Hi.
Wait, this was just a discussion.
Oh, that's right, everyone. But we're tabling that.
Yeah, it's a table, no, it's started, it's a guy. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then the, uh, we are trying on the seconds of building.
That's me. Oh, yeah, no, it's not, yeah, that, that, that is weird.
Yeah. They can give you a title, but I just think from the previous one. No, it's, uh, where, what do you call?
Great, so uh, the thought is mine here, cause I want to talk to you guys about this, uh, this particular item, because I think uh. Uh, in my conversations with uh, Jeff and Craig, when we've been at her different times and spoken with y'all about this, I just wanna make sure.
uh, in my conversations with, uh, Jeff and Craig, when we've been here different times, and spoken with you all about this, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on, uh, what, what the, uh, what the goal is, uh, with regard to this consideration of this kind of item. Uh, and the reason why I say that is because, uh, it's a big deal. And when I say a big deal, what I mean by that is when, um, you, you have a, uh, the legislature has given legislative bodies a pretty, pretty large power to, uh, basically suspend, uh, a zoning regulation or development regulation. So, uh, and so the reason why I say that's a big deal is because what that effectively does is it takes it completely out of the purview of any of the administrative staff or executive staff, uh, to be able to more. Now, a lot of folks, some of which are in the audience, probably still remember, uh, when we were doing moratoriums, uh, related to, uh, marijuana, uh, situation that we had, and we kind of carefully studying that. Uh, that's where, uh, that's a situation where you, that you have a developing regulation. So when you're permitting such things where you're going forward, you're studying, uh, and you're getting, uh, you're going forward and getting the information you need to, to make that decision, and that's a time to process. And in the meantime, you want to make sure that the situation can't change and you're, while you're going for the general. So anyway, uh, I'm not here to give you a primer on, on moratoriums, but I just wanted to all change, uh, what the, uh, uh, it's, it's a very significant authority that the council has to be able to, essentially, put a moratorium on for zoning permitting of, uh, developments in particular zones. And it sounded like, based on my discussions with Jeff and Greg, and it sounds like, uh, um, based on the minutes and things with you folks, that, uh, there's, um, there's some concerns related to, uh, design and develop, or excuse me, uh, construction and design standards that we're really trying to focus on. And I guess my concern, as your lawyer and I, I try not to give legal advice, uh, to clients in public, so, because it's frowned upon. But, uh, no, seriously, it, it is, I just want to make sure that we're all clear, that, uh, it's a, it's a significant, uh, uh, action to take. Uh, and that it's, uh, I just want to make sure that we are, when I say we, your legal counsel, make sure that we're, we're crafting the, the tool that you're, that you're needing to solve the problem that you're trying to solve. So I really wanted to make sure that I was clear about what that goal was, uh, in terms of, um, making sure that we fix a particular thing with regard to, if you feel like, and I, and in there, chime in and, and, uh, let me know where it's, or just, or, 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 but I know there was some concern about some of the standards and some of the quality of the construction that was taking place in regard to some now. I want to be clear, um, if that's really the goal, and that's not what we're trying to, to focus on, there are better ways to do that. My recommendation, there are better ways to do that, man, uh, to take, uh, what's referred to as a quote draconian, uh, approach to this is, uh, in terms of putting a moratorium on all development areas, and all, essentially all zones, do it, zoning that there, you'll see that, um, it sounded like the discussion was related to, uh, it was, it was related to both R-two and R-three and, and some other zones, which, if you look at the zoning map, that's, that's a lot, that's pretty much the city. So, uh, I just want to be clear on what our goal is or what your goal is, and what our job is to be able to bring back to the council, be able to to fix a problem or to help keep information so that we can start. So with that, it sounds like.
Yes, I would like to, yeah, uh, we're gonna have a meeting with, um, Greg, um, what's that, Monday? I can't remember, it was yesterday, I think it was yesterday, Sunday, Monday. Um, we worked out a lot of the issues. One, one of the issues that they raised was how many acres are affected by this? And so, um, JB got on the, um, website and, and, uh, looked at GPS and calculated how many subdivisions, how many empty lots we have that would be affected by this, because everyone that has already started construction is burnt. So this would not affect anybody that's already started.
I mean, one, I'm gonna make one point, if I may. If anyone who has submitted a, who's what we refer to as vested, so if they've submitted a plat application, a completed plat application, or they we, that, those are, and I appreciate your term, grandfather, but essentially those are vested rights. And so they vested with whatever standards we had in place at that time.
That's correct.
So.
And we took out all of those. Those are not affected. What remains in the city is sixty-three acres. And, um, the city is total, uh, six-hundred-and-forty acres. So it's less than ten percent of, of the, um, area, uh, that would be affected. And we have no actions on any of those parts. So this, as far as we're concerned, would be a pretty good time to go for it. And we also narrowed the scope to simply rebuild homes that would not affect any siding or roof repairs or garage building and repairs to an existing home. So we're focusing on rebuild homes. So that, um, that is what we've learned to do is set the design standards in place.
So, so it sounds like what, what you're saying, just want to make sure I'm reflecting back exactly what you're hearing, because it sounds like what you're saying is that the, the theory or the, the thought process is to, um, essentially, a moratorium would stop all ability for anyone in these zones to apply for a, a, a development permit, either subdivision or plat, uh, related, it sounds like, maybe to only to single-family homes. And with the goal of being to further discover or investigate, work through the design developments or the design construction standard, that's there's some concerns about.
Right, and, um, our planners have already come up with a strong hand for us, so, you know, putting it through as fast as we could, should only be ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
Strong, not familiar.
Um, strong hand?
Yeah.
A draft.
Oh.
This is what they think.
Uh, for the, for the updated design construction standards? Okay, good. Okay, so, but I just want to make sure that we're all clear, though. What that will mean is that while this moratorium effect, no applications can be processed for any single-family homes in those zones.
That's correct, any new homes, right.
And is that what council wants us to track?
That's what we agreed on last week, last time.
That's what the council agreed to support. I think we discussed it. And I don't think anybody was opposed to recording that particular route. Can I give a catchie? Okay. Yeah, you went there.
So.
And, and, excuse me, just one more. So here, here's my answer. And so, we, when we go forward, we take that step, and I certainly think that, understanding case law and as well as as the statute, it certainly is something that the council's authority would be able to do that. Um, obviously, there's risks associated, I might discuss those in a session. But what I, what I also want to make sure is that it's clear that, that what the goal is, we want to limit to just single-family dwelling construction, uh, related to both R-two and R-three zones. And, and with the goal of being able to focus on the, the fact that it would be able to amend the designing construction standards related to that type of, of plat, or excuse me, permit application. I believe that's what this is going to say. Is there a fear of an influx of these applications if we start this process without putting a moratorium on?
Yes, absolutely. And that was a very real problem that.
We're worried that once they know we're doing this, they're gonna start doing their application, and that way they get vested in to the old design standards.
And that's why it's so important. That's why the system is possible.
One of my questions that I have is if, being that R-three is a high-density residential, and we only focus on single-family homes, and it's, 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 but what about apartments?
I, I, um, I didn't bring up the word single-family, that came out.
Okay.
Um,
So that's the lead.
I, I think that it would be, uh, it could be duplexes, it could be, uh, apartments that have certain design standards that are affected.
So all new construction?
New, oh, residential construction, it could be multi-family.
So if somebody wanted to add a, an addition on, an extra bedroom on their, their home, it would not be able. Because that would be new.
Uh, they would not be able to do it.
I think one of the things Jeff and Craig brought up with the city when they, we need to look at the definition of a new structures out of the IBC, which is the building code, what is their definition?
Yeah.
Before we, because is it?
I don't, yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that he would be affected. She wanted to add on, because that's the existing home. It's already, we've got it.
It, it will, it will matter, and that's why I'm, I'm here, that's why I want to make sure that we're very clear about this. It will, it will very much matter, because what will the, the, the moratorium will essentially suspend that development in that particular zone. And so we have to be careful to make sure. So, well, it's very critical to me, uh, and to our office, to make sure that it's the, it's the, the goal that we're, that we're using, the tool that we're using is going to accomplish the goal. And I, uh, yeah, I'm not going to give, give any legal advice in public, but I want to make sure that that is what the council's goal is, is to focus on these designing construction standards for these zones. And we'll try to craft something, it sounds like what council's saying they want us to do is craft something very narrow related to a particular type of construction activity, new new construction of some kind, and, and really what will, um, I'm not familiar with the IBC, uh, department, I don't know if you're familiar with IBC or not, in, in the context of, I think, uh, the key is really, we're basically suspending a portion of our code uh, for a chunk of time. Uh, and so we'll need to be very careful to make sure that we define the exact portions of code that are suspended. Um, but as, as Mayor stated before, it won't have any exact, I'm sorry, it's already applied, it won't have still any issue-built-in permits for folks who, who have, uh, completed plats, uh, pulmonary plats that, uh, that will still take place. So, um, but, uh, going forward, uh, we would essentially be, uh, stopping, uh, new construction on those zones, uh, for six months period. I forgot my question.
And I hope that, um, it will be sorted, because now we're gonna start the, the. All right, um.
Um, finally, I have, uh, next item up is actually the ninth street.
Yeah.
This, that was one standard, right?
Oh, right.
So, discussed earlier, there's roughly five locations that have angle park with five stalls. Um, we, in discussing with Alan, it's probably better if there's a parallel, so that on that east side. And then we can allow a little bike. Well, so just see that, that. Maybe we'll see how that works. And everybody. Didn't give Alan.
I'm in favor of that.
You copy that, Alan?
I did, so everybody would like the parallel parking on the east side? Uh, the new section of, uh, Ninth Street?
Correct.
Okay. All right, we will, uh, uh, lay that out and have them stripe it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so for the second time. Uh, Danny?
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, we're reconvening the Benton City City Council meeting. And I do not believe we have any further actions. And so, um, are there any, um, announcements for the good of the group?
Do you think of any announcements for the good of the group that I'd like to say that it's wonderful to see everybody signing base in person today? And I appreciate you all.
We do have Earth Day this Saturday, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a big cleanup effort.
Cleanup.
Yep.
Spend it at work.
We're gonna be out there.
Versus, order day.
We're gonna start on this, uh, uh, the whole bike path is gonna be cleaned up, and, uh, we're gonna start over here in this other park soon. We'll, we'll clean it up, but then that's next on the list of chopping down dead wood.
Not sure how that relates to Law Day, or Day, but I think, I think.
Get it out of there.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say.